Ready, Andrew? Welcome to the Lyon County Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, June 14, 2022. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person. And the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment: Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing *9 from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for public comment. To unmute yourself, dial *6. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending us an email at shannongentonan@sj-- well, lyoncounty.org the day prior to the proposed meeting date. Be sure to type "public comment" or "request for support materials" in the subject line. Written public comment may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at 27 South Main Street, Harrington, Nevada, 89447, but all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the planning commission within 24 hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at the Greg Honeywell Lyon County Commission Chambers, 27 South Main Street, Harrington, Nevada. No action will be taken-- action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and all electronic devices in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. Item one, roll call. Connie, Sean, Audrey, Michael, John, Loretta, we are all here. Okay, pledge of allegiance. Audrey, would you lead us in the pledge? Public participation: No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The commission reserves the right to reduce this three-minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the chair to calendar the matter for a future planning commission meeting. The planning commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Review and adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at it? Is there any public participation at this time? Seeing none, review and adoption of the agenda. Has everybody taken a look at it? Are there any comments or corrections?
A move that we adopt today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any comments or corrections? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion that we approve the minutes from the May 10, 2022 meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, presentation and reading of miscellaneous correspondence. It looks like we did receive some for certain agenda items. Advisory Board reports. Do we have any of those? Okay. Did you all get that in your packet?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, public hearing items. Item 8A for possible action: To approve Lulun Hayden's request for a parcel map to subdivide a 17.07 acre parcel zoned RR-T22T rural residential two-acre minimum with trailer overlay into three parcels, the smallest being five acres in size located on Lindley Lane, unaddressed in Mason Valley, APN 014-351-05, PLZ-2022-140.
Rob, are you the host on this meeting or for Zoom? It won't let me share.
It should be you.
It looks like I am. Hang on just a sec.
Andrew, it looks like you're the host now.
Okay, it still says it's disabled. Okay, it still says it's disabled. We might need a quick break to get this.
Okay, we'll recess for five minutes and resume this. Give them a chance to sort this out.
Yeah, Andrew, every time I try to share screen, it says host is disabled sharing.
All right, sorry about that. I think we're ready to go again.
Okay, we are ready whenever you are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning Commissioners, Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting the Leland Hayden tentative parcel map. Subject sites located at nine Lindley Lane in Mason Valley. The image on the left is our vicinity map showing that the site is east of Urington and is located approximately one point seven miles north of Highway ninety-five A. On the right, we see a zoom in of the roadways that access the site from ninety-five A, most notably north five B lane provides access to the site and Lindley Lane borders the site to the north. Summary of the applicant's request is that the seventeen, the existing seventeen point zero seven acre parcel be subdivided into three separate parcels, two five acres in size and one at seven point zero seven acres. And we'll look at that in more detail when we get to the map. I did mention that Lindley Lane provides the vehicular access and borders the northern part of the site. It is currently a gravel road approved to county standards for gravel road. However, there is a road on the south side of the parcel Canyon Road or Canyon Drive, apologies, which is on paper, but it is not improved. The existing site, it's vacant and well largely vacant, there is no residential development. There are some storage sheds and some materials located in the center of the site, they're boxed there. Master plan designation for the site is rural residential for the two thousand and twenty master plan update. For the master plan, there are some characteristics for properties with this land use designation, notably that they are found in rural districts and on the suburbanizing fringe. While that might not be true today, it is a location that is potentially open to future development, lot size and layouts also vary and in this, this site has a rather boxy shape, so it's pretty typical in configuration. But the, the proposed split would provide properties that individually be developed in the future. The current zoning is RR two T from Title ten, second rural residential district, two acre minimum with a trailer overlay. As you've heard many times, the zoning consistency matrix converts this site to a Title fifteen designation of RR two, also rural residential with two acre minimum. The image shows that the parcel is surrounded by light zoning and to the west, there again rural residential parcels with twenty acres. The FEMA FERs, the flood insurance rate map for the site includes two separate zones. To the left, the blue areas are zone AO. That's a flood zone designation that has both an elevation and velocity calculated. So future development on that portion of the site would require flood plain development permit from Lyon County. The east side is X unshaded, meaning it's outside the five hundred year floodplain and would not be subject to flood plain development permits. This image is from the county's GIS system. It depicts the parcel with the red X, but the blue lines are all our water infrastructure in the area, the public infrastructure. The green is a sewer, as you can see neither of those facility types are near the property and it doesn't look like there's any future expected expansion to the site. So future development will require approvals from not just Lyon County, but from NDP and the Nevada Division of Water Resources for independent septic systems and wells. This is an image from the actual map. I've added some color to make it easier to decipher. You can see the three parcels bordered in green with the five acre parcels on east and west, the seven point zero seven acre parcel in the center. The green lines depict public utility easements that were included along the borders and the frontages of all the new proposed lot lines. And the blue line down the middle is the delineation of separate floodplain zones. As we discussed earlier, AO to the west and X unshaded to the east. The proposed division of this land meets the minimum parcel sizes of two acres, of course. In addition, the existing structures in the center of the property, while not depicted on the tenant parcel map, would meet the setbacks for the zoning. I have asked that the surveyors include their locations on the final parcel map. We have that formally on the record. Utility easements, again, also meet our standards. If anything, they're even wider than they need to be on the street frontages. We leave the standards only seven and a half feet, we have ten feet here. I think that's, that's a that's a fine way to move forward here. It gives future developers a bit more flexibility and it also protects the utility companies from having difficulty accessing any future installments for maintenance. We didn't receive comments from the Mason Valley Fire Protection District. However, they would have the authority and obtain that right to comment on any future development proposals, meaning that if additional facilities are required, it would be at the development stage, then that would come into play. The Lyon County Roads Department did send a comment and called out the fact that, that Lindley Lane is a gravel roadway and that any future accesses Canyon Road, all that's on the south side of the existing parcel configuration, would require the applicant to approve Canyon Drive, the south side, to the county's gravel roadway standards, and that would be on the developer's dime, not the county's. And the county would not be retaining the site. That comment from the Roads Department is incorporated into condition number twelve. Tentative parcel maps per Title fifteen are subject to review criteria. These would be called findings and any other entitlements instance. I took the liberty here of kind of highlighting by underline the sort of pertinent part of each of the review criteria. I do believe that the staff report covers each of these in more detail, but just for the sake of this, for this presentation, I just thought we could just kind of quickly run through these. The first being where applicable, individual systems sewage disposal, as we discussed, that would be at the applicant's expense, pending approval from NDP for a septic system. Availability of water, again, there is no public water. Property owners in the future would need NDP, I'm sorry, Division of Water Resources approval for a well, zoning ordinances and master plan. The the proposed zoning or the existing zoning still meets the standards for the master plan. Land division does not change that in any way. General conformity with the master plan, streets and highways, there's already existing access. So no additional accesses would need to be constructed for these properties to develop. Physical characteristics of the land, relatively flat, we've already discussed the floodplain, typical slopes and soils in the area. Recommendations and comments from other entities, again, those have been incorporated specifically into condition number twelve from the comment from the Roads Department. And availability and accessibility of fire protection. Again, we haven't received any comments from the Mason Valley Fire District. However, they will have opportunity and the right to require whatever they feel is necessary at the time of development. I did throw up here the recommended motion, although I'm sure it's in front of you as well, and I am available for any questions.
Okay, Loretta, do you have any questions? John? Michael?
No.
Audrey?
No.
Sean?
No.
I don't either. Thank you. Is the owner or his representative here to speak? Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. David Crook of Lumis and Associates, representing Mr. Hayden. Pretty simple parcel map from our standpoint. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for him? Okay, we do not.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
My name is David Ray. My name is David Ray and I'm the chairman of the Mason Valley Citizens Advisory Board. We were to hear this, this item at the first of June. However, our meeting did not take place. We had no discussion on this because two of my members didn't show up on a three-man board, so we did not have any discussion. The fellow who was just speaking was there, we did not discuss this. However, I am also a resident of that area of Mason Valley and took the liberty as a private citizen as resident to go on Lindley Lane and look at this property. And of course, I had all of the information that came to the board to look at as far as division of this and that and what was going on and the different codices and things. And I can find no reason to not approve this. I can find every reason to approve it as it is. All I wanted to do is give that to you so you could use it in whatever you want to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
Our motion. Based upon review criteria, items one through three in the findings of the staff report, I note that the Lyon County Fund and Commission approved the tenant parcel map request for Leland Hayden, APN zero one four dash three five one dash zero five, PLZ dash twenty twenty-two dash one forty, subject to the following conditions of approval, one through fifteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Yes, most impasses. Item eight B for possible action. Forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for Lyon County's request for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning on an approximately two point zero nine acre parcel from RR dash two T, second rural residential, two acre minimum trailer overlay to PF public facilities located at one fifty-eight Garnet Circle, Mount House, Nevada, APN zero one six dash two two one dash four zero. Louis?
Thank you again, Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting proposed zoning map amendment from Lyon County. Subject site is located in Mount House, specifically at one fifty-eight Garnet Circle. On the left, we again see a vicinity map, sites approximately twenty-one hundred feet north of Highway fifty as, as the crow flies. And on the right, see the actual access roads, specifically Red Rock Road intersects with Highway fifty and provides the general access to the property. The zoning request as read into the record for the introduction is to change the current zoning from RR two T to PF public facilities. Some small descriptions here of the existing parcels dimensions and topography. On the left is an image from the county assessor's map, sites approximately two point zero nine acres and is vacant. There is a slight slope heading to the southeast on the site. And you see on the, on the right slide that Garnet Circle accesses the property at the northeast. There is no flood zone designated here. The site is, is X unshaded for the FEMA term maps. Again, meaning that the site is outside the five hundred year floodplain and that future development would not be subject to floodplain development permit. This image is from the county's GIS for utilities. The subject parcel marked with red X. And you'll note a six inch water main running along Garnet Circle, again, accessing intersecting with the site at the northeast. As is common in Mount House, there are no sewer facilities, but future development would be obligated to connect to the water system and then go through the Nevada Division or that Division of Environmental Protection for individual septic systems. It is important to note, this is a zone changer, there is no development proposed at this time. The existing master plan designation for the site is public quasi-public. This is important because the existing zoning of RR two is not consistent with public quasi-public. So there's a lot of information here in this slide. Again, the subject parcel on the left is, is marked with red X on the right as well, but it's important to note that there are two other publicly owned properties in the vicinity. So to the southwest, labeled here, the central Lyon County Fire District location, it's also in purple and then in green, it's a public park. So something that's occurring here is that the publicly owned properties are somewhat centrally located to the south. Those grayish areas will be looking at employment. And then to the northeast and west of the subject site is suburban residential for the master plan. So these three properties effectively create something of a transition zone between commercial properties to the south and residential to the northeast and west of the subject property. The right side of this slide. The right side of this slide includes character district for Mount House, which is all suburban. But the master plan designation of public quasi-public. Is not consistent and this slide shows the zoning with RR two zoning. Chapter three of the master plan includes a table. That denotes which zoning districts are consistent with which master plan designations. The details are in the staff report, it didn't put them on the slide. But we'll see, we see here that the subject parcel in the middle there with RR two zoning. Is is same zoning as surrounding properties, but in the effort to try and bring this property into consistency with the master plan. Is appropriate to designate the site with the proposed zoning of public facilities. As everybody I'm sure is aware, this property is been has been the subject of many discussions. Future development of a community center in Mount House. But this process of a zone change is not tied to the development, it's simply a zone change. The findings for the zone change are found in chapter fifteen two two zero zero five of Title fifteen. And we'll quickly run through them individually. Staff makes recommendations for approvals or denials for items such as zone change based on these findings. So again, while the staff report includes more details, I did include slides here. With short summaries of how staff was able to make these findings. And again, I underlined the important part of each finding, finding A mentions consistent consistency with the policies. Embodied in adopted master plan. As mentioned many times, the existing master plan and zoning do not match. The proposed zoning and public facilities would match the existing master plan designation. Finding B mentions inconsistency or potential inconsistency with the adequate public facilities policies. The public facilities policies are generally related to vehicular access. And then the public utilities of water sewer, as already discussed, the vehicular access already exists. Public water is available and while sewer is not available. It's a typical situation in Mount House, there's nothing unique about this property. Finding C mentions compatibility with the actual or master planned adjacent uses. So this is where that that. That transition sort of region, I think, comes to play. As I'm sure many people are aware, to the south of the site is Moonlight Bunny Ranch. The rest of the gray areas in the slide, this is this is again the master plan map image. The the gray areas are all commercial development, the orange areas are all residential development. So having this sort of little barrier between the two types of uses, it is a useful way to transition land. The the development in the future of this site for a community center or any other. Public type of facility would necessitate this zone change because again, the current zoning is rural residential. So regardless of whether or not a community center was ever built. This is a step that the county should move through so that in a planning sense, the property is prepared for any type of public facility. So the the findings again are outlined in greater detail in the staff report. But again, we we here have the staff recommendations as as in the last presentation. And I think with that, I can be available for questions.
Okay, does anyone have questions from us?
I do.
Sean?
So some understanding, maybe I'm wrong, somebody know the actual property itself. The history of the property was donated for this purpose or a purpose for the community?
I I yes, from my understanding as well, yes.
Because I that's what I wanted to confirm, I I kind of read these these these. Letters and I thought to myself, the community really wants this because of the fact they donated this property for this purpose. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I have a just a clarification on. On page forty six, under the request. It says from RR two T, which is rural residential. Two acre minimum trailer overlay, but it says in parentheses, limited commercial district.
I think that's a typo, sir. My apologies.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So we can line through that.
Does anyone else have questions? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I guess we're ready for a motion.
I'm based on the aforementioned findings, I moved that the Lyon County Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Lyon County Board of Commissioners. For the zoning map amendment requested by Lyon County to change the zoning district from RR. Dash two T rural residential two acres minimum with trailer overlay to. The PF public facility zoning district for a two point zero nine acreage parcel located at one fifty eight. Garnet Circle, Mount House, APN zero one six dash two twenty one dash forty. PLZ dash twenty twenty two dash one fifty five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Louis. Item eight C for possible action, forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for Lyon County's request. For a code amendment for Title fifteen to amend Lyon County Code, Title fifteen, the Lyon County Land Use and Development Code. To add chapter fifteen point two four zero. Mass grading permits to allow for site disturbance for non-residential developments prior to the issuance of a building permit. To require submission of a reclamation plan and reclamation surety bond prior to deeming the mass grading commit permit. Application complete to list the mass grading plan permit submission requirements and other matters pertaining thereto. Draft ordinance Title fifteen land use and development code amendment. Andrew?
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Community Development Director for the record. This is one of three code amendments that we have today. This one is being proposed by staff to fix an issue that we have with Title fifteen. And this will be adding a new chapter to Title fifteen, chapter two forty, which is dealing with mass grading permits. So the request for a Lyon County Code Amendment for Title fifteen to amend Lyon County Title fifteen. To allow for mass grading permits is to allow for site disturbance for non-residential developments prior to the issuance of a building permit. It requires a submission of a reclamation plan and plan and a reclamation surety bond. Prior to determine to deeming the mass grading permit application to be complete. It lists the mass grading plan permit submission requirements. And there's a there's a few other things listed in the ordinance, etc. So in two thousand six to two thousand eight, several single family residential developments. A few examples listed there. Were allowed to mass grade the project sites and partially install water, sewer and storm drainage infrastructure prior to the submittal and approval of any final. So the developers subsequently went bankrupt when the recession happened and it created a bit of an issue for the county. Because all of a sudden you had some of these sites with half the improvements done, half graded. And so as a result of that, it. You know, it created some dust problems, some soil erosion problems and we didn't really have a way to reclaim these sites. So based on the experience, the Community Development Department stopped issuing mass grading permits. At that time, because there was no mechanism to enforce the reclamation and all that stuff. But. And so the current Title fifteen regulations require that the final map or that the submission for a site improvement permit. Is concurrent with the final map, final subdivision map application and that helps address. That the regulations clearly address the issues associated with pre-designed production, detached, single family residential developments. But it leaves a gap with. With commercial development, so. Which do not fit within the pre-designed production detached, single family residential dwelling unit development mode. Current language does not clearly address large scale developments such as the Webstrom Project, Northern Nevada Industrial Center. Or some of the other projects up in the Mount House. So the request to amend Title fifteen and add chapter two forty would create a separate permitting process. That would define when a mass grading permit is required. Define what activities would disturb the surface of a parcel in Lyon County but are considered exempt from securing a mass grading permit. Describe the procedures by which to submit for a mass grading permit and the submission requirements. And establish when the approval of a mass grading permit expires. Similar to other building permits, mass grading permits would be an administrative review and approval process. The mass grading permit would not be issued if the proposed use is not allowed under the existing zoning or requires approval of another land development entitlement. Or zoning entitlement such as a major variance, a conditional use permit or an administrative design review. They would have to go through all that prior to us issuing. The inclusion of the requirement to submit a reclamation plan and a reclamation bond. Is also in the ordinance, a reclamation plan and reclamation bond is to address the potential that the additional development approvals are not granted. Obviously, you know, they have to go through the other building permit processes. And in case of, in case the economy, you know, experiences a downturn and the project doesn't move forward. The reclamation plan and bond would address the surface disturbance issues of dust control and stormwater pollution prevention. For areas disturbed by abandoned non-residential projects and then negative impacts to adjacent developed properties. The proposed zoning text, if I'm going too fast, and and you have any questions, let me know. The proposed zoning text amendment would alert the applicant of additional requirements at the state level depending on the acreage proposed to be disturbed. So there's a few examples on the slide there, stormwater pollution prevention plan. Surface area disturbance permit, any time you're grading over five acres, you have to get a surface area disturbance permit. NDP Bureau of Corrective Actions, person of emergency superfund sampling plan approval. That's within areas specific to the operational unit one. I EPA has proposed some changes and. To operation unit two, but that hasn't gone into effect yet, but if it did, then those would be required in that area as well. The proposed zoning text amendment would require the applicant to comply documentation of having secured those approvals. Prior to the issuance of the mass grading permit, if the size or location of the project meets the state agency's. The propose, the purpose of the zoning text amendment is to provide clear direction and a venue to allow development proposals to move efficiently towards the completion of the non-residential developments. And provides protections to avoid site disturbances that create public health, safety in general, welfare concerns as experienced as a result of the two thousand eight, two thousand twelve recession. That, I can answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Andrew?
I just have a comment, I think something like this is needed, I mean, I live in Dayton. Those huge winds we had just a couple, excuse me, a couple days ago. You could hardly see to get out on Highway fifty, all the dust, you know, it was just from the little bit of construction that's going on out there now.
Yeah.
And and they have, they have contractors, you know, to deal with it, but you know, in an instance like you're talking about, there wouldn't be. Way to handle that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one question, Andrew, during the recession when the mass grade permit. Was that, we stopped issuing those prior to. Submittal, was that codified into Title ten or was it just an administrative? Decision.
You know, that's, that's a good question, and to be really honest, I don't have the answer of, I know Mr. Pizel's on. On Zoom, he might be able to shed some light on that.
Rob, do you have any insight on that?
Yes, for the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner. John, excuse me, Commissioner Castanella, you may remember Title ten dealt with land use and development. And then Title eleven dealt with subdivision of land. Within Title eleven, the code at that point in time allowed a developer to actually initiate. At the site improvements, the starting like mass grading of the site, the installation, the trenching and installation of infrastructure. Prior to approval of a final subdivision map for the project, so. In essence, you could get a tentative map approval, submit a site improvement permit. Application and be approved and start digging before you actually had an approved final map. The final map is documented and the map that actually subdivides the land itself and is recorded. And once that's recorded, you can actually sell the individual lots. What happened in in particularly in the Dayton area. With a lot of the examples in the in the presentation is they went ahead, the developers at that point in time got the tentative map approval, started. Installing the site improvements without a final map. And then, of course, the economy cratered and they they ceased operations, so that is what happened. And, you know, part of the instigation of this, the the actual. Title ten and and Title eleven really didn't contain anything that permitted a mass grading. And Sean can correct me because he was with the building department at that point in time, if I'm in error, but. In essence, you could make application through the building department to start mass grading a site. Again, at that point in time, the the code, it wasn't codified that any. Any permitting or any any bonding was required in case you ceased moving forward with that project. So again, we're going through this code amendment to number one, codify. The ability to do mass grading, but also provide some protections for the county and the residents within Lyon County. If a project suddenly stops and and we need to start to reclaim the site.
Understood, thank you, Rob.
Are there any other questions?
I was just gonna make the comment that realistically, the mass grading is not the utilities, Rob pointed that out. Mass grading is moving large cubic yards of earth to substantiate, know what those. That that can be a long process, that can be three to six months of moving earth where you get a head start and I believe that this was a great. Proposal in Title fifteen to give a tool to developers or builders or even homeowners to come and move earth. If we're talking just earth, prior to going on to further process.
I do have a question, what's the fee structure going to be for these permits?
So that's an excellent question. In the ordinance, it says that it'll be based on resolution by the Board of County Commissioners. I've actually got a draft resolution prepared that'll probably go before the board on the second meeting in July. I had to do a business impact statement as a part of that, which we sent out a couple weeks ago. I don't, I think the deadline's tomorrow and so far we haven't received any comment back. The fee structure will be based off evaluation, based off of the, so. Based off the engineering certificate that they've got to provide, the engineer's estimate of cost of the work. Which is outlined in the actual ordinance itself. That'll be taken and then correlated to the. The the permit fee schedule that that we have. That's already in in the fee resolution that we we use for other permits, so basically it'd be based off of valuation.
Okay, thank you. I guess, do we have any public comment on this item?
My name is Donald Smith, I reside in Longton. My question, I have a question as to. The reason that in the exemption, item fifteen dot two four oh dot oh three. Item five, which reads exploration, extractions and processing of minerals and construction materials is exempted from this process.
Yes, for the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner, those are specific exemptions listed in the building code. Also with regards to.
Also with regards to the mining. There is a specific exemption based on the amount of material being moved as part of an exploration. For mining operations, for potential mining operations. And with regards to construction materials, that is for aggregate operations. As you know, aggregate operations and. Mining, proposed mining operations on private lands are required to go through a conditional use permit, which is a separate and distinct. Application from a mass grading permit.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Is there any more public comment?
I don't see any online.
Okay, then I guess we're ready to hear a motion.
Based on the above findings, the Lion County Planning Commission votes to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to amend Lion County Code Title Fifteen. Land Use and Development Code, adopting chapter fifteen point two forty. Mass grading permits to allow for site disturbance for non-residential developments prior to the issuance of a building permit. To require submission of a reclamation plan and reclamation surety bond prior to deeming the mass grading permit application complete. To list the mass grading plan permit submission requirements and other matters pertaining thereto to the Board of Commissioners.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One, I'm gonna say.
And Sean Keating abstains. And motion passes. Item eight D for possible action forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for Lyon County's request for a code amendment for title fifteen to amend. Lion County Code Title Fifteen to add chapter fifteen point two eight oh. Street name change requests to identify the process by which a citizen of Lyon County may make an application to change an existing street name to a new street name. To, to identify the review process to include noticing of the property owners of parcels with frontage on said street. And the appropriate community advisory board of the street name change request application. Designate the planning commission as the final decision-making body with the ability. To appeal the planning commission's decisions to the Board of the Board of Commissioners. Requiring the amendment of record maps by certificates of amendment as outlined in NRS. Two seven eight point four seven three and Lion County Code Chapter fifteen point six oh one point oh one and other matters pertaining thereto. Andrew.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lion County Community Development Director for the record. So this amendment is doing, is codifying street name changes and would add chapter two eighty to title fifteen. It's interesting, we actually, and on our planning application, there's a section for street name changes, there's a fee for street name changes, but there's no process outlined for street name changes. So we figured we probably might want to fix that, so. This request for a street name change. Would list the submission materials required for a citizen of Lion County to request changing an existing street name to a new street. It outlines the review process to include public hearings and noticing per chapter fifteen ten and. It designates the planning commission as the final decision-making body, subject to the appeal procedures in chapter fifteen, so the appeal. Go to the Board of County Commissioners and other matters pertaining. So at the July fifteenth, twenty twenty one, Board of County Commissioners. Under agenda item sixteen D, a county commissioner proposed to change the name of an existing street in order to honor a former president. County staff realized there was no process in Lion County codes by which to address the commissioners' stated goal. Previous experiences with similar requests in other Nevada local jurisdictions allowed staff to recommend a path by which. To accomplish the commissioner's intent with adequate public participation through a public hearing process, however. In order to address any future street name change request, staff is of the opinion that the street name change process needs to be adopted to the Lion County. Since street names are originally requested through the subdivision of land procedures, parcel map or tentative parcel map or subdivision map. The logical extension would be to have the process by which to change an existing street name, streets name. Would go through the same county office as well, within the previous subdivision code title ten, chapter eleven oh seven fourteen. Development criteria subsection eleven, street names stated the following. I expected me through this all if you would like, this is pretty much what's outlined in the. In ordinance currently, but street names and suffixes shall be designated by the developer, subject to the approval of the planning commission and in accordance with the following. General policy and shall be short, under twelve letters if possible and preferably in one word. Have a simple spelling and easy pronunciation. Avoid prefixes such as north and south, east and west and upper and lower. Be related to the type and importance of the street now, so, so the suffix Boulevard should not be used to. For a minor residential road, that wouldn't make a lot of sense. Avoid, avoid the use of numbers and letters of street names, not be incongruous of offensive or geographically misleading. Not be repetitive or similar in sound and character to streets already in existence in Lyon County. Have a single name for a street having a continuous alignment. When to be connected to the future, in the future, into a continuous alignment or extended, they're the same name as the existing street. And have a metal street sign to be erected as specified in the standard details for public works construction on at least. One of every intersection and shall identify each street. So that was what was in title eleven and you'll notice reading through. The ordinance, the requirements, the criteria are very similar. So based on the previous subdivision ordinance, ordinance, staff recommends that the final decision-making body should be the planning commission, subject to the appeal section of title fifteen. So the Board of County Commissioners would be the appealing. This proposed zoning tax amendment would create a process that would include a public hearing before the, both the community advisory board. In which the street is located, the planning commission would take the final action subject to the standard public hearing procedures. And then the proposed zoning tax amendment would provide an open and fair process by which to review a street name change request. Street name change requests were not in the previous land, Lion County Land Use Development Code Title Ten and Title Eleven, so the. What I had outlined previously was when a street is created. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I actually do have one question, is this, if that came before us, would that be a condition thing where we could add certain conditions? Because my concern is if this happens on a street where there are businesses, schools, etc., the cost of that name change could be significant for them. And, you know, I'd be concerned about if the person wanting to change the street name should be willing to pay for that.
I don't know that we could condition a street name change, so I think that would just come up to the, the approval or denial of the application.
My main concern.
Yeah, unless there's, Rob has a different opinion. The way I read it.
Yeah, and Rob Faisal, senior planner for the record, I agree, I think it's either an up or down vote. And I think the planning commission can certainly include that in their, in making the decision that they do with regards to the street name change request.
Okay, anybody else have questions or comments?
You know, what about if there's like an emergency rescue where a helicopter comes in, are they gonna be notified if the different street changes?
Well, so it would be a similar process to what we do now when a new street's created, right, so our office. Carrie, when a final map is reported, she notifies the responding agencies. About that, so they would get a notification that, that the, there was a change.
Sean, do you have any questions? Audrey. Michael.
Just from my understanding. So the approval of a change. Is through this body.
Correct.
Now the appeal. To that is still with this body?
No, the appeal would be to the.
Okay, all right, I just.
John. Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any online.
Okay, seeing none. We are ready for a motion.
Our motion. Based on the above findings, the Lion County Plan Commission posts forward a recommendation of approval of the request to amend Lion County Code Title Fifteen. Land Use and Development Code, adopting chapter fifteen point two eight zero. Street name change request to identify some submission material. Required for citizen of Lion County to request changing an existing street name to a new street name. The review process to include public hearing and noticing. Per chapter fifteen point ten and establishing the planning commission as the final decision-making body. Subject to the appeal procedure in chapter fifteen point one two and other matters pertaining thereto. To the Board of Commissioners.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have one, Connie is opposed. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item eight E for possible action forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for Sierra Range Consultants' request. For a Lion County Code Amendment to title, to amend title fifteen, the Lion County Land Use and Development Code. Table fifteen point three two zero dash one, in order to permit additional uses with. An approved conditional use permit within the resource land zoning district. Currently, outdoor shooting ranges are permitted with the CUP. The proposed amendments would add indoor shooting ranges, archery ranges and skeet trap shooting range course. To the uses permitted with the CUP and other matters pertaining thereto. Is this yours, Louis? Okay.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Community Development Director for the record. So this zone text amendment. Is actually, this one wasn't proposed by Lion County, this is proposed by Sierra Range Consultants. And I will go ahead and get into this, this changes some of the allowed uses within the resource land RL zoning district. The applicant, Sierra Range Consultants proposes to amend the table of allowed uses for resident, rural residential, commercial mixed use. Commercial and agriculture and resource zoning districts to add the uses listed below. That are permitted in the resource land zoning district, so that's kind of with an approved conditional use permit, I should say. So that's a little bit confusing, it's only changing the resource land. Zoning district, that's just the table covers those other uses, so I just want to clarify that a little bit. But it would allow for indoor shooting ranges, archery ranges and skeet trap shooting ranges and courses. So currently, outdoor shooting range is a permitted use. With an approved conditional use permit and resource land zoning district. Anybody that shot skeet or trap or, or. Archery knows that those are quite a bit less impactful than. Then. Outdoor shooting range, so. Our argument or the proposal is to make that, that a conditional use as well, staff is supportive of this, you can see the. The change used there. Table that presents. How it would change in the ordinance, so. This one's pretty simple, it's pretty, pretty quick presentation here, I'm happy to answer any questions, but staff is recommending.
Okay, Audrey, did you have a question?
This just makes it. Clear, is that what you're saying, the use is clear?
Well, so currently they're not a permitted.
More comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's actually giving some rights back to folks in resource land, resource land zoning. Tends to fall outside of the character districts, there are more rural areas of the county, so this would be an appropriate spot for these types of uses. Like I said, there's no, it's already a conditional use in, for an outdoor shooting range. So I'll give you an example, like Carson City has a skeet and trap range in the middle of their industrial district, so. Outside, yeah, and it's pretty well, pretty well attended, right, but it shows kind of how that, that use is not as impactful as a shooting range with. Which they have outside of. That area. So I think that this is an appropriate change, it was something that I, I feel was probably left out inadvertently and. Title fifteen originally, although I wasn't here when title fifteen was enacted, so I can't say that officially, but. If I was here, it would have been my.
Any other questions or comments for Andrew? Loretta, John, Michael.
The applicant's representative is here, I don't know if they have any.
Okay, if the applicant's representative would like to speak, we're willing to listen.
Morning, my name is Marty Harrison with Originate Architecture. My actual client is Representative Ken is on, on zoom as well, just if you have any questions in that regard.
Any questions for him? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
We'll make that motion. Based on the staff analysis contained in the staff report. I move that the Lion County Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval for the zoning text amendments. Request by Sierra Range Consultants to the Board of Commissioners. And amend Lion County Code Title Fifteen Land Development Code, Chapter fifteen point three twenty, section three, table one, as described. In the ordinance.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? A motion, motion passes. Okay. Item eight F for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for Eric. Latex request for zoning map amendments to change the zoning on three parcels approximately three hundred and ninety two point four seven acres in total. From RR five fifth rural residential twenty acre minimum. To RL resource land located in Silver Springs unaddressed and accessed by Micro Avenue. APNs zero one five dash five two one dash seventeen. Zero one five dash five two one dash twenty five, zero one five dash five two one dash twenty six. PLZ dash two two zero two two dash one five zero, PLZ two zero two two dash one five one, PLZ two zero two two dash one five two. Louis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Louis Carriello, Senior Planner, presenting the zoning map amendment request from Sierra Range Consultants. So these subject parcels are located in Stagecoach, south of highway fifty. And accessed by BLM land, so there are no public accesses maintained by the county. To these properties, on the left, here is our vicinity map, the subject parcels are noted with the red X. That blue star is Churchill View, so you'll see the properties are located between highway fifty to the northwest and Churchill View to the southeast. I did label the parcel to the east as a BLM parcel of over six thousand acres. It is not all of the BLM property, it is just that one parcel to the east is, is over six thousand acres, there is actually significantly more. BLM land around this property, we'll get to that in future slides, on the right side of this image is. The three parcels outlined, the four. The four, the three sites combined total 392.47 acres. Two parcels about 40 acres and the other about 313 acres. Summary of the request is to change the zoning for all three parcels from RR5 5th Rural Residential District with 20-acre minimum. That's the expired Title 10 designation to resource land. So these images are taken from the staff report. On the left is sort of an oblique view, meaning that we're sort of maybe at a 45-degree angle on Google Earth. I attempted to sort of project from that angle the borders of the subject parcels. So we see Highway 50 there to the north. And to the east is Micro Avenue. So Micro Avenue connects to Highway 50 and runs through BLM land and runs to the east of the property. Current use for these sites in this entire region is for shooting and for other types of recreation. So people take their side-by-sides in their trucks and their four-by-fours. And they are accessing BLM land as they have a right to do. However, these properties are publicly, are privately owned, excuse me. And I'm sure folks just aren't aware of the fact that they're accessing private land when they come to the sites. But the other thing that this image depicts and the description in the staff report includes a bit more detail is that there is significant topography change within the subject parcels. The image on the right is taken from the county's GIS and includes 10-foot contours. I denoted two locations with a approximately a 440-foot elevation change. And that would be from the lower portions of the property in the center to the northern side of the property. So that would be sort of the, I guess, I guess we can call it mountains, maybe more closely hills, but that separate the lower points of the property from Highway 50. The reason I bring this up is that these sites have been the subject of roundtable meetings with community development. The applicants, Sierra Range Consultants, who we just heard from the past presentation, it proposes zone the, the allowed uses changed to resource land zoning because as a subject of the roundtable, they are proposing outdoor shooting range for the site. That would be a pending application would require a conditional use permit. As Andrew touched on in the last item. In addition, they are proposing accessory buildings to the outdoor shooting range to potentially include, you know, offices, locker rooms, sort of a pro shop as well as a training facility with a target market football enforcement. So maybe outdoor partitions potentially moving them indoors at some point in the future. That is again, something that would be covered through the conditional use permit process. What we're discussing today is only a zone change. But I did want part of the public record to demonstrate the topography change and a better description of the physical characteristics of the site. And we typically do for certain changes. As you might expect, this type of elevation, there are no special flood hazard areas. So future development on the site would not require a flood plain development permit. All right, so now we'll get right into the master plan and zoning. There's a lot going on in this slide. On the left side of the slide is the master plan designation. These images are included in the staff report. The subject parcels are located within a section that is boxed there in blue for the 2010 and 2020 master plan. The properties are designated as resource. You'll see they're surrounded to the east, southwest by open space designations for the master plan. And those are all parcels of land that is owned by BLM. To the north, while not depicted on this slide because it's part of the Stagecoach Master Plan Map, to the north of the subject parcels are properties designated specific plan in the master plan. It's important to note that all of these properties are vacant with the exception of official territories. The right side of this slide depicts the existing zoning of RR5. And I'm sure it's not too difficult to recognize that the master plan designations are not consistent with the zoning here. It's a rather common issue here in Lyon County, particularly for some of these publicly owned lands that have some residual of residential. So notably, per Chapter 3 of the master plan, land use, economy, and growth. As I've mentioned in a previous presentation, there are tables in Chapter 3 of the master plan that show which master plan designations are consistent with which zoning districts. And it is clearly stated that these residential districts are not consistent with resource per the master plan. And as you might imagine, resource lands is of course consistent. The findings for zone change are found in Chapter 220.05 of Title 15. And the presentation includes quick summaries of how staff made the findings. The staff report includes more details. Finding A mentions consistency with policies adopted in the master plan. As we already discussed, the existing zoning is not consistent with the existing master plan proposal is. Finding B mentions the adequate public facilities policies. These properties do not have access to the public, publicly maintained or dedicated roads. They do not have water. They do not have sewer. For these reasons, it is not appropriate to have residential designations for the sites. For the zoning, it is appropriate to introduce this rural, this resource land zoning designations for sites like this. As you would imagine, future development would be subject to all the requirements for vehicular access, water, sewer, electricity, et cetera. But that would all be on the developer's dime without any reasonable expectation that the county would ever assume any of its responsibilities. It's outlined in the staff report, although it is important to note this is just a zone change. So there are no conditions permitted with zone changes. And at this point, there is no development requirement proposed. Finding C addresses compatibility with the actual or master plan adjacent uses. As previously discussed, all the land around this property is vacant. The BLM land to the east, south, and west being open space would be inappropriate and easy transition to resource land. To the north, the specific plan and privately owned property as part of Stagecoach is also vacant. And if you read through the master plan, specific plans, in order to develop within a specific planned designated land, one needs to bring forward a more comprehensive development proposal. So, you know, it's not the sort of thing where someone comes in and just builds a home. They would be obligated to come forward with a large area of developer proposal. We have not seen any, any initiatives to develop that land at this point. So the idea of having resource land adjacent to vacant land is easily a compatible proposal. Staff's recommendations are included in the staff report again in the slide. Maybe I'll just go back to maybe this slide to make myself available for questions. And Mr. Harson is here on behalf of the applicant as well as, I believe, someone.
Ready, do you have any questions? John, Michael, Audrey. John?
The, the question I got is, did the advisory board ever hear of this Stagecoach Advisory Board?
They, they did receive the, the information, but I
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director. Yeah, they actually, they asked me to attend the meeting and I did a presentation. They put it on their agenda for presentation only, so they couldn't forward a recommendation.
Connie, any questions? Does the owner's representative want to speak? Okay, does anybody have any questions for him? Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any online.
Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
Our motion. Based on the aforementioned findings, I move the Lyon County Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Lyon County Board of Commissioners for the zoning map amendment requested by Eric Lincoln to change the zoning district from RR-5 5th Rural Residential 20-acre minimum to RL Resource Land for three parcels comprising a total of 392.42 acres accessed by Micro Avenue and Stagecoach, APNs 015-521-17, 015-521-25, and 015-521-26, PLZ 2022-150, 151, 152.
One second.
Excuse me, just one correction. She said comprising a total of 392.42 and it's 0.47.
47.
Yes.
Give us a second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Recede to convene is the Lyon County Public Lands Management Advisory Board. Before we get into that, does anybody need a break or are we all good? Okay, we're good. Okay. Item nine, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Is there any public participation on public lands management? Okay, seeing none. Action items, do we have any, Andrew? Okay, we don't have any of those. Item number 11, staff update on public lands bill.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director. Again, this month I don't have any update. I think I'm, at this point, I might, if it's all right with this board, take the staff update on the public lands bill off until I do have something to update. If that's okay. I think the last four or five months I haven't had anything. We're, we're still waiting on draft maps and as soon as we get them, we'll.
So it'll just be shown as an agenda item when we
Yeah, right.
Okay, item 12, board member comments. Do we have any board member comments? Okay, future agenda items. Okay, last chance for public participation on this. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it's property agendized. Is there any public comment?
Again, Don Smith, Wellington. Item 11A in the advisory board management says review and discussion of the Lyon County lands bill. Is there a lands bill?
Do you want to respond to that, Andrew?
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record. So at the moment, there is no lands bill. There's no draft lands bill, as I've stated in this in, in front of this commission before. Last year, the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners directed us to work to begin to explore the possibility of putting together a lands bill. And they authorized us to hire a consultant to work on it. At the moment, there is no proposed lands bill. As a part of that exploration process, we started putting together some conceptual maps. They're not complete at this time. On the conceptual map would be essentially what a potential lands bill could look like. Any lands bill would have to go through a pretty extensive process. It would have to come back through this board. It's going to have to go through several public meetings in each of the communities. And it would have to go back before they report to county commissioners before there could even be a lands bill. So I just want to provide that clarification.
Thank you.
From that explanation, it does sound like there is in process a proposed lands bill.
So again, we are working. The intended outcome of it will be a draft lands bill, but I don't have a draft lands bill currently.
Okay, you can only speak one time. I think, I think Andrew's answered your question. So thank you for your comment. Okay, adjourned to reconvene. Oh, is there any more public comment?
So I think what he's I have feeling on that 11, it's a possibility. Is that correct? A possibility of one. So maybe just rewording that so that they don't believe that there's already one set in place when it's just a possibility at this point.
Yeah, and again, I haven't had any updates in the last several months because it's kind of a slow process. So I, you know, we're probably just going to take it off for future meetings.
Something we'd like to have, we just don't have anything, any word on it at this point.
Correct, and I don't want to cause any confusion, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public comment? Okay. Adjourned to reconvene is the Lyon County Planning Commission. Item 15, staff comments and commissioner comments. 15A, staff update on recent county commissioner actions.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record. So first off, I want to start off by apologizing. I know there was an issue this month with some of the, with getting our board packets out. They were mailed last week, so we're not sure what happened there. But we are working to address that in the future. I know we were able to get them delivered yesterday to those that had requested them. I made some phone calls to everybody to see who needed one. That those staff or the board packets are also available on, on the website and everything. But I do understand that sometimes it's kind of difficult to, to read off of the screen. So I do again, want to apologize for that. So at the last Lyon County Board of Commissioners, the first meeting in June, June 2, we had a couple of code amendments that had gone through the planning commission in May. One was the director approval of final maps. And so the board did propose that. So we will be hearing that, I believe, at the first meeting in July to discuss on, discuss that and vote on that one. The they did propose a few changes to it. One of them was that there was a section in there that would give the director the ability to grant a one-time extension for two years. The board decided that they would like to keep that ability for themselves. So, which I agree with. So we made that one change and they proposed that with the one change. The self-storage ordinance did not get proposed at the last meeting. We will be talking about that here this Thursday on the 16th. They did have some changes, so we did discuss it. One of the, the biggest change was that the 1,000-foot requirement. The board felt that 1,000 feet was inappropriate. So instead, what we took a look at doing was and what I'll be proposing on Thursday is some additional screening requirements. The board directed me to take a look at what some of the other jurisdictions are doing with screening requirements and trying to incorporate that within the work. So we will be bringing that to the board of county commissioners on Thursday. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Andrew? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We just have a comment.
Okay.
On the mailing of the packets, I did want to let you know that my packet was postmarked last Thursday, June 9. So it obviously, I'm going to blame the postal system.
We appreciated you delivering them. That was awesome. Okay, item 16, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic and will not be restrict, restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be as an item upon which action may be taken. Is there any more public participation at this time? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned.